Got the meeting order? Roll call, both please.
Alderman Persick?
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Here.
Alderman Evans?
Here.
Alderman Kerwin?
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Here.
Alderman Tudor?
Here.
Alderman Stuter?
Here.
All present, you have a forum.
Thank you. I declared the regular meeting of Wilmington City Council on October 7th, 2014 is now in session. Council has approval of the minutes for September 16th for you.
Do I make the motion to accept the minutes from September 16th and hand them place on file?
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin, any discussion? Roll call, both please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor, I'm sorry, Stuter?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I need a motion to open up the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to open the public hearing at 7:02 PM to discuss the annexation of 10 acres located at 30151 South Kavanaugh Road, petitioner Ridge Logistics Park 1 LLC.
Motion by Alderman Van Dyne, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Larry Hall, roll call, both please.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is now open. We have Jennifer here for Ridgeport. Jennifer, could you kind of explain the 10 acres, kind of what's that?
Sure, absolutely. I have a map here, just going to point it out. As you know, as a part of our annexation, we were required to make offers to homeowners when certain permits were pulled for building permits for industrial buildings. And as part of the transload building, we made offers on homeowners within a half mile radius. One of those being the former Boreal property, which is located right here. That property was subsequently purchased by Ridge and we are now in ownership of that. And as a part of our continuing strategy to develop the land, we're looking to rezone that to industrial for any future uses. We don't have anything laid out on there in particular, but as we build up around it, we'd like to be able to develop that as our master plan is.
Simple.
Okay.
When did you finish the deal with Mr. Borger?
We closed on that, I believe, in April or May of this year.
What was the whole of it? What was the whole of bringing it forward to us?
You know, really, we didn't have a plan for the property, but as we are beginning to develop around it, we wanted to just have the opportunity to, you know, develop it as industrial for the rest of the project. So, it was, you know, just our intent to eventually have that rezoned.
Okay. Have there any other, have you bought any other parcels at this point that are not added, added to the annexation agreement?
We are not, we have not closed on any additional parcels that are contiguous to any property that we own. That we are working on, we are under contract on two properties out there that were triggered by the Michelin project, but those are not purchased yet.
Okay, thank you. Alright, any comments from the public? Any comments, questions from council? Would you like to close the public hearing? Then I'm going to have Jennifer give us an update on where Ridgeport's at. So, we can get a motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing at 7:05.
A motion by Alderman Van Dyne, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Evans, roll call, both please.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Alright, Jennifer, if you want to just kind of update us on where Ridgeport's at?
Absolutely.
What's going on up there?
Yeah, just giving you an update on the progress to date. Our big one out there, Michelin, we had some weather delays due to all the rain out there, but we're still moving forward with that. We are 65% complete on our floor, 45% complete on site utilities, 20% complete on foundations, 20% complete on pre-cast, which if you've been out there, you'll see pre-cast is going up, and about 15% complete on steel. So, we still expect to complete the project on time despite some of the rain that we've had recently. Our travel plaza, we are now under, we're negotiating a sale agreement with TA to sell that parcel to them for development of that project. That's the fueling station, the travel plaza with the quick serve restaurants, as well as the diesel pumps. That, that's under negotiation right now, and depending on the closing of that, we will, TA will either begin construction this fall if weather permits, or it may be put back to next spring, depending on when that does get closed. Our infrastructure improvements are underway. We're extending Grasshamm Boulevard to the south end of the Michelin site, and we're putting in Ridge Way. Those are about to be poured with concrete. And again, we've had some weather delays with that as well, but we expect to have those completed by the end of November. The only item that might not be complete by then would be landscaping, which will be weather dependent as well. And speaking of concrete, we are, a tenant of ours has submitted a plan for concrete, temporary concrete batch plan to Ridgeport to supply Ridgeport as well as the area with concrete. And we expect that to actually be up and running within the next two weeks and be able to supply our project with concrete at a lesser cost than if it were coming from a concrete batch plant further away. Our building B, we have the pad ready for a million square feet. We have continual interest in that, and we actually have a prospect that we're speaking to right now for 250,000 square feet of that building. If we can expedite that lease and get that signed before November 1st probably, we could begin construction on that as soon as we are able to pull the permit. If that lease negotiation does slide back, that would most likely be spring start. We are also in discussions with a tenant for 100,000 square foot freezer facility in the food park. We've had great interest in the food park. As you know, McCabe cold storage is up and running. They are running a unit train a week from Salton, California to here in Wilmington. And they're currently 75% full on the eastbound trip and 95% full on the westbound trip. So, once that train is full, they will then be selling the second train, which is the eventual plan for them to have two trains per week between here and Salton, California. And that is really fueling a lot of interest in what we're calling our food park area. We're seeing a lot of food land tenants, both rail-served and non-rail-served, showing interest in that. The biggest one right now would be the 100,000 square foot freezer facility that we're in talks with. And other than that, we're really just promoting the park throughout the brokerage community. We have regular sessions with the brokers to kind of update them on progress, let them know where we stand, and we're definitely seeing a lot of prospects coming through them. So, any questions?
Go on. Thank you. Alright. Next item on the agenda is, the mayor's report, just a couple things. Reminder that the Wilmington Coalition has their annual awards and public dinner next Monday at 6:30 here in the chamber. Alright, hopefully everybody can be there. And also, the trick or treating hours nationally for Halloween will be 4:30 to 7:30 on October 31st. Alright, next item we have is citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments tonight? Yes, sir.
Be real brief, my name is Steve Flynn, good evening everyone, by the way. I'm a lifelong Wilmington resident. I own Cliffs Off Road Parking Mart Sales. Perhaps you're familiar with off-road obstacle racing. It's the biggest craze around the country, actually around the world. They have Warrior Dash, Dirt Runner, things of that. Anybody not familiar with obstacle racing? Real briefly, you run through the mud, you run several miles, and they like to abuse you and you give them a lot of money. And that's what they do, so you do obstacles, barbed wire, walls, carry heavy things. Okay, so, I've had the Spartan race at the Cliffs for the last four years. This year was our best year yet. We had, don't know the exact numbers, we had over 12,000 runners over the two days, several thousand spectators showed up. So, at least 20,000 people for the weekend showed up at my park. Well, I've been wanting to bring one to Wilmington for a long time. In my opinion, one of the best things we could do for a town is tourism, and here's why. We could start a factory and we can make jobs, and then we build more houses and we increase our schools, our police, our fire protection, our streets, our sewers, all the infrastructure, which is fine and good. But when tourists come into town, they give you all their money and then they go home. And so, this is one of those opportunities where we could bring in a lot of money on a few key weekends per year, bring in a lot of tourists and dollars, introduce a lot of people to Wilmington, they get to experience Wilmington, they give us their money, and the business is their money, and then they go home. So, I've been wanting to bring one to Wilmington for a while. Well, we have that opportunity now. I have a company who's willing to sign up for next year for a race. They put on a really cool event. They're an older company, been in business a long time, but the newer race that they're doing, it's a Navy SEAL race. In fact, they even start festivities out with bringing Navy SEALs in a helicopter, landing them in the festival area, and it's just quite a show. So, you're wondering where? Well, we now have land. And, you know, it's potential that if we could use that Celotex land to get this thing started, it's got a real potential. I don't know what the details on that are, if we're going to get that right away, or how we can use it. It's going to be quite a few years before we turn that into some pristine land. So, in the meantime, we could run people around out there and have a really cool event. So, I'm bringing that tonight to get your take on it, and if it's something that the city council is interested, maybe I could get on the agenda for next meeting, I could come back and we could discuss all the details. So, basically, I'm just trying to get some input, see if this is something we're interested in doing potentially next year.
Will be contacted? Well, I mean, I've had some discussions with Steve. Steve's like said several years ago, he's always talking to me about it for the past few years, trying to find someplace to do this, and even with the acquisition of Celotex property, does provide potential for an opportunity. We don't know what, like I said, we don't know where everything's at with the Celotex property. But no, I, me personally, I think I like the idea of bringing something like that into the area. Basically, we picked what it is, utilize a lot of the natural resources, and we have that all over Wilmington. So, for something like that, and like you said, if we get more of those details related to Celotex property, you know, the council's not opposed to, you know, at least looking into that option to see how everything progresses.
You know, I talked to this company, and they really, they love the idea, because we got some good woods out there, we have some steep hills, we already have some swamps that they would run them through and crawl them through, and they get all muddy and stuff. But then, we have the potential, and of course, I haven't talked to the owners yet, we have the potential then of crossing the Fort Creek, running through some old nasty industrial area, which they love that idea, because then they set up walls and stuff. So, literally, their participants will be breaching walls and doors, just like Navy SEALs, you know. They have, they'll do paintball breaches and stuff, so participants are loving this race. We have the opportunity maybe run them along the river under the railroad trestle, down the back alley, across the mill race, they'd swim them or they'd rope them across into the island, where they could do, we could do this incredible festival area in the island. We could even run them into the island, bring them back, and finish up the race in downtown Wilmington, so we'd have thousands of spectators in downtown Wilmington watching this, finish this race, so.
What's the minimum acreage that they like to have?
This race, I don't think is a 13-mile, I think it's only about a 12K. So, however you can get trails to get there, tend to 12K.
I guess I'm talking about for the event area, you know, when they drop the seal down, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, that's, right now, like, for instance, my event area is on less than five acres.
Okay, that's what I was looking at.
And that's the main spectator area. They have several obstacles so spectators can watch. We have an opportunity here, like I said, we would swim them or rope them across the mill race right away, run through the back parking lot, swim or run across that little area of mill race, and then into the park, and then even bring them back. So, we can have spectators all along downtown the park. It could be kind of really incredible.
Steve, how do you handle, I mean, logistics, you think, whether there's logistics with traffic, there's logistics with parking?
We have a couple of options.
Security?
Yeah. So, these companies, what they do is, so I'll be the middleman, so they'll be coming, and I'll be able to deal with city council and take care of all that. But what we'll do is, we sit down with the police chief, and we talk about, and possibly the city workers, about logistics, closing off streets, where we're going to park them, and then we come up with a plan. The police chief generally has, you know, we give, they tell us what they want. Tough Mudder races in Seneca, the last two years, they park them at the racetrack, around 53,000 bucks in 45 minutes to come out to that race, and they have 12,000 people bust back and forth.
I have, I just, I was going to say, I just happened to know a girl who has run, that I work with, that has just run all of those races, and the interest is amazing. And they're, and you're 100% right, everybody loves it.
Here's, here's what my vision would be, is we would deal with the chaos for one weekend, we'd close the downtown off, and we would let them park wherever there's a legal parking spot. We would get some of the, some of the organizations that are not-for-profit, or the cheerleaders of footballs, and they would drive shuttles around, and we would let them park in Wilmington any way we can. Because what happens in Seneca is, every business owner was so mad, because they had 12,000 people coming in their town. And the people, they all said, you know, they're trying to tell them, hey, come by our restaurant, you know, and they're like, we'd love to, our bus leaves in 10 minutes, we had no choice. If we could figure out a way, park them at the schools, park them wherever, leave them in Wilmington, deal with the chaos for the weekend of people walking around, worst thing that's going to happen is, once in a while, we're going to have a driveway blocked in, you know, someone's going to get towed. But, that's, that would be the perfect scenario for me for that.
I think we have, we have open space in the area, but, you know, and as we get into those statistics, we're getting more details. How many spots do we need? How many, you know, how much acreage do we need to park these vehicles?
Here's the nice thing about this event here, next year, they're only estimating 1,000 to 3,000 participants. That's a great way for Wilmington to start. That's small, that's small. So, it might bring in, say, 3,000 to 5,000 people for the weekend, as opposed to bringing in Tough Mudder, or we wouldn't do Warrior Dash, because they're like 30,000, 40,000 people for the weekend in Chatham out there. And we just couldn't handle logistics on that right now. We park them right now in a grass field at the Cliffs, so we mow it, and we just pray that it doesn't rain, you know. And so, we're using about 25 acres of parking approximately, so.
Well, Steve, I got your number, and as we get to progress, this is, we find out more what's going on with Celotex property.
Sounds good.
What to find is, what is the timeframe or is this, this event is scheduled?
They, they need to be doing their scheduling soon. So, if there is interest here, I know at least what they'll do is, they'll fly up from Florida, and they'll come in and take a look at the different locations. They already looked on satellite.
Do they have time, time slots they're looking at?
Yeah, I don't know, yes, exactly, they do, I don't know what they are.
Do you have an idea on, of course, put together already, if there's something you could show us, or?
Yeah, yeah, I could show you on a topographical aerial, because like I said, we'd start them on the Celotex land, and we'd run them all through there, get them all tired and muddy, and then I'd love to see us get them downtown somehow, into the park, and finish up either in the island or finish up downtown. I mean, Tough Mudder, they run them through electrical cords, they electrocute them at the finish, you know, and so everybody gets to watch that, you know.
Shaka.
Yeah, Shaka, hey, more like Trish, you know, what can I say?
Yeah, but, you know, like, the biggest, I think our biggest obstacle is to find out what exactly is the timeframe of what's going on with Celotex property. That'll be our biggest, once we, once we have our, you know, everything done with that.
Any estimates on what we might have, like, when we'll know for sure if we aren't getting it even? Because if they know for sure we're getting it, then it'll be available.
Well, it's pretty much ours. It's just, we, there's other stuff that's gone through, you know, it's all, it's all the legal stuff. But, yeah, I would, I would hopefully within probably the next six weeks at that.
So, I'll probably encourage them to come up then and take a site visit, and I'll take them for a little bit of a tour around the area.
Do you have a potential date in mind?
No, they, they picked a date, and so, I know he was trying summer, so, the key would be...
You probably don't want to conflict with Catfish Day.
No, no, I mean, it's a catfish day. No, but it would be kind of cool.
That's the big attraction, though.
Two weeks before, or two weeks after, I mean, Wilmington would have some real momentum there.
Absolutely. Is this a weekend?
It would just be a weekend, probably a one-day race this year. This one will build up to where eventually it becomes a two-day race, but what they'll do is, they always try to do, get, if they end up with 7,000 people, they'll get them all raced in one day.
Well, it's best to have a small race, and we're got to Kingston, and they wouldn't have.
It's a rookie situation, yeah, because then we would have the opportunity, if we like it, and if it does good, we could bring in other companies. So, and like I said, you know, I could handle the, you know, the middleman part of it. If this land works out, we have an opportunity possibly for a big Jeep Festival. And, I mean, when cities get Jeep Festivals, they turn into really big and awesome events. They're huge fanatics.
Probably, you say you do your current ones on, are they all privately held?
Yes.
And so, their, the insurance is taken care of through the developer?
The insurance is taken care of through the events, yeah. So, that's a nice thing, they completely identify, indemnify anybody, landowners. We had rent a parking field, they completely identified them, you know, as well. They have the insurance, they'll list the city, they list everybody who's involved. So, there's really, and then on top of that, every participant has to sign a waiver, and Illinois is one of the few states that will respect a law written waiver, so I know that from the off-road park.
How's that going for you? Have you had to urgency lift any people out, or take care of anything like that in the past? Most of the people show up are pretty much, you know, athletes?
Yeah, no, they're idiots. Oh, are you talking about the off-road park, or are you talking about the races? Yeah, no, and like Spartan Race, who I had, they'd never even had a death, and they're one of the original founding, you know, race companies. So, Tough Mudder had a death, someone was on a conifuge under the water, they thought he was gone, and they didn't save him.
Have you looked at the old landfill?
What's that?
The old landfill?
Okay, what about it?
Have you ever looked at that site, possibly?
Where's the old landfill?
Uh, the Ostervine Road.
Oh, that'd be a great site.
Oh, it is, just before, possibly?
Yeah, I've been out there like years ago.
Yeah, big lake out front and big hill to that.
That could work too. But that's only about 80 acres?
I don't know how many acres that is.
If I remember right from the top, well, it's about 80. But we, that could be a potential site as well, because the possibility is, I could possibly rent some land off the Tamrac Camper, so we think, because it has about 40 or 50 acres of hills and stuff.
Yes.
So, yeah, there's, there's some.
Could I bust them out there, have them park in town?
Oh, okay.
Bust them out there.
How much, how much parking?
Back on the, yeah. There you go.
There you go. Parking is critical, and if we could find someone who had a field that says, oh yeah, I could have it, you know, do winter wheat and have it mowed by May, you know, and that's 40, I mean, yeah. There's money to be made there too. So, that's it, so, very good.
Thank you.
If you guys would like me to come back and address you anytime, just let me know, and then.
If I got your number, I'm also going to pass it on to Tony, our city administrator, so we're handling.
And then I'll be, I'll get in contact with them and see if we can maybe nail down a date they're looking for, that way we can ask more specifics.
There you go, yeah. Very good, thank you. I'll do some research, but I have never heard any negative press about those events.
Me neither.
For the first time, we backed up Route 6, so the local police were a little bit nervous about that. About three miles in east direction on 6, so the state police were calling, but, but the city was smiling so much. They just dealt with it, so, cool. Thank you, I have to go, I have another meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for talking, bye. Alright, any other citizens' comments? Alright, planning a zoning commission, we have the ordinance in relation to the annexation. Have we got that, do you want to get that?
I move to approve ordinance number 14-10-07-01, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Wilmington, Illinois, as pertains to the north 10 acres of the south 30 acres of the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 16, township 33 North, range nine, east of the third principal meridian in Will County, Illinois, having a pin of 03-17-16-300-007-0000 to rezone said property from A1 agricultural to I5 large-scale planned industrial.
A motion by Alderman Van Dyne, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Persick, any discussion? This is what we had the public hearing for. There we go, I'll back him. Any further discussion? Roll call, both please.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Their next regular scheduled meeting is for Thursday, November 6th, 2014, 6 o'clock PM. Committee reports building grounds, parks, health, and safety, Alderman Persick, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, October 15th, 2014, at 6:00 PM.
Just note before we go further, everybody should have some documentation in relation to the park district agreement. Everybody can make sure they review that. Any ideas, suggestions to be passed on to the committee for discussion moving forward with that, so. What's that would be an email, if not, we can just send it to you.
Yeah, it goes email. Tell her to give me a hard copy.
Not a problem.
We'll do it.
Alright. Water, sewer streets and alleys, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Kerwin.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the bid submitted by Grant Filders in the amount of $74,610 for the Vine Street and River Street water main replacement project.
A motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second? Seconded by Alderman, any discussion? Roll call, both please.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, October 15th, 2014, at 5:30 PM.
Please, and as to Alderman Stuter, Alderman Tudor.
Mr. Mayor, our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, October 14th, 2014, at 5:30 PM.
Chief, please, you have one person, one person in the category right now? Finance Administration, Land Acquisition Committee, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Tudor.
I move to approve the accounts payable report dated October 1st, 2014, in the amount of $1,049,611 and 27 cents.
A motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Stuter, any discussion? Roll call, both please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2014-06, a resolution approving the retainer of Municipal Collections of America Incorporated by the city attorney to collect unpaid fines and penalties, and entering into the attached agreement to authorize said firm to collect all debts of the city tendered to said firm.
A motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Kerwin, any discussion? This was the, this was the guidance of municipal collections, which the chief was dealing with as far as the collections of unpaid fines we had at the last finance meeting. Also, it's been, if you notice, anything that we discussed was a resolution to ensure that any of our fees that they collect were outside of the actual fines. They got the total amount, they got the finer to the separate amount. So, that's what the resolution for, to make sure that all that's covered. Any further discussion? Roll call, both please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to accept the fiscal year 2014 financial audit as presented by Matt and Associates.
A motion by Alderman Tutter, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion? Rokeau, please.
Alderman Tutter?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, the next two, I move to approve the Fifth Amendment to the annexation agreement among the City of Wilmington and Illinois Municipal Corporation, Will County, Illinois, and Ridge Logistics Park 1 LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, RLPI, Bridgeport Logistics Center Property Owners Association, and Illinois Non-for-Profit Corporation, RLCPOA, and RLPI, and RLCPOA.
A motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tutter, any discussion? Pretty much got it right with the amendment in regards to the debt. Rokeau, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Tutter?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement among the City of Wilmington, Ridge Logistics Park 1 LLC, a Delaware limited liability corporation, RLPI, Bridgeport Logistics Center Property Owners Association, and Illinois Non-for-Profit Corporation, and Bridgeport Development Services LLC, a Delaware limited liability company.
A motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tutter, any discussion? Rokeau, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Tutter?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, October 21, 2014, at 6:00 PM.
More than some license video, Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Evans.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, October 14, 2014, at 6:00 PM.
Personnel collective bargaining, Alderman Hall, Alderman Persick. We do have executive session today.
Yes.
Collective bargaining, all of them. All right, Tony said, no city administrators report, Tony's not here for personal reasons, so, I'm sure everybody's aware, so, doing okay. Attorneys report, Mr. Irvin.
Thank you. Over the last few weeks, I've been working on a number of things for the city. The sale of the property at Third Chestnut is set for last Friday, but it's continued in this coming Friday, there's a few things to iron out, but, so, it's currently set for this coming Friday. I've been working on a zoning ordinance, amendment to the zoning ordinance, and I was involved